Um, I know that Jack tentatively accepted. And then Rab, um, at the meeting, he said he wanted to be here, so we'll see, but. Um, yeah, do you, do you know, it sounded like John might join virtually, or do you know if he's?
Yeah, it just probably, it doesn't look like it's gonna be till probably four thirty, maybe later. So I would say, let's keep it moving forward. Um, and also tomorrow, I'm happy to take notes and then send them to you to send out to the staff members on like more. From the board of trustees as well.
Right.
But yeah, I think he's just gonna be late.
Yeah, okay. Well.
And I would say give them like five or 10 minutes, but if you wanna start, we can always, you know. Catch them up.
Yeah.
That's up to you and Melody, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let, um, them read over the questions and see if there's any that stand to go.
Okay, perfect.
Um, so as far as questions goes, definitely. These are some of the same questions that I have concerns about.
Okay.
Um, I think the only. Additional kind of question I have that's not covered here is. Um. Fair labor standards, they have a lawsuit that's been filed against them from one of their employees about. Not following fair labor standards, so I guess my question is something along the lines of. Uh, what, um. Uh, I don't even know how to ask the question.
Well, one question I would add is, is consideration of that, the agreement of mining, et cetera. Were they considering that to be something outside of their jurisdiction?
Yeah, exactly.
And I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't know either, and so I've been going back and forth with Patrick and Lucas. Um, at the. Department of Natural Resources. Let me scroll this one, um.
Also Rab just joined online.
And the last thing I got was. The straight statute, so. I was able to get.
Um, Rab, in the room is Rich, Melody and I, can you hear, um, Melody, could you say something? Can you, we're gonna close it.
It's very noisy in the hall.
I think you're muted.
Yeah, I can hear everybody well, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Great.
Thanks.
So, these questions are, are these items, are these topics for us to discuss? Or are these, um, something that we wanna ask of someone?
So John sent these over, um, as questions that we should consider. Um, because they, they are basically evaluating the mine operations. Um, and we're just trying to get as much feedback as possible, um, because they're writing a letter. Um, that, in that aim, that he, uh, that I sent in the agenda. Um, has our, like, draft letter, I believe, and it's not complete. Um, so that would be something to, like, read over and, um, see what we would like to change or add or anything.
Yeah, so I went through a list of things, just like brainstorming list, this isn't like. Uh. Edited, spell checked, formatted, anything like that. Um, but do you guys just want me to read off? That, some of the things I was thinking as concerns?
Sure, yeah.
Um. So, uh, along social sustainability, I've got those fair labor concerns. Um, but also dealing with, um, a housing shortage in the area, how are they gonna house those workers? Being it's a dirt county road, how are they gonna deal with the increased traffic on that road? Um, and then navigating interactions with, uh, recreation. Um, so four wheel drivers, cross-country skiers, et cetera, all the people that use the 505. Um, and then wildlife interactions. Uh. Another kind of bucket of things I've concerned with is their repeated issues with compliance. Um, so not only have they failed to submit all of their water quality tests on time over the last couple of years, they've often been late. Um, there's also. A letter to them, and I think this is part of why they had to file the permit for having, not having a wastewater treatment facility at the site.
Okay. Looks like Rab wants to chime in.
Yeah.
Yeah, Melody, on that point of, um, the 505, do we know who currently maintains the 505? Uh, who has that responsibility at least?
County.
It's a county road. Over county road, 505.
All right, all the way up to the parking lot where all the recreational issues, that's all county maintained?
County, and then you have forest roads that branch from that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or US Forest Service, yeah.
And it's my understanding. That the mine currently does. Uh, do some roadwork in agreement with the county, like the county and the mine. Have their own agreements about who's responsible for plowing, grading, all that kinda stuff. And it's my understanding, though I'm not certain, that the mine has already taken on some of that responsibility, but I couldn't tell you exactly what.
Here, yeah, that, that was the basis of my question, I guess, is if they were already grading and plowing that road, then there would be less concern. But if that's the county that's doing the grading, then, uh, yeah, definitely needs, that conversation needs to happen.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's at, um. Five points where maybe. The mine takes over control after that.
It's five months.
Um. Where the road splits into five roads, uh, so right at the top of the hill.
At the parking lot at the top of the hill?
Um.
Big parking area.
Not like the main parking area, like halfway up Cariboo. So you go down Cariboo Road, and then you come up those tight switchbacks.
In the flat part?
And then you come to a flat area before you head up.
That's where cabin.
And then on the right is where you go like behind the elementary school and stuff.
Oh, 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 okay.
I think it's counting road 126.
There's at least one private, at least one private residence above that.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, yeah.
Just the one, I think, I mean, that's an, that's an actual, like, year-round occupied residence.
The guy has like the Maasai Mara sort of flags and stuff like that.
Yep, yep. Uh, but that was like many, many years ago that that was the deal, so very well could have changed.
Well, they did a lot of grading up there last summer on the road, I don't know who paid for it.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, I think that would be a counting question.
Yeah, definitely.
Um. So, repeated compliance issues. Um. Then there's, you know, the expansion of their activity, which is just gonna cause. Increases of all sorts of disruptions and risks, whether that's risk to contaminants or disruption of wildlife patterns. Um, and then. With, um, the style of mining that they're doing, I think that is one question on here. That I kind of can answer, but not really, is, um. Where is it on this? Basically, what they have said is that after they do their stoping, the pit that's left over, they fill with a slurry. Which I assume is mostly tailings. Um, and so.
I was reading, filling in voids under, underground for most of the tailings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, doesn't seem to me that there's like a big surface, um, issue with. Like a big tailings pile on the surface, anything larger than really what they have.
Yeah.
The real surface impacts seem to be, um, this mill that they wanna put in, which, as I read this, would require a subsequent permit. So this is almost like a preliminary, it's almost like a permit to get a permit for the mill and the other activities.
Yes.
Um, so.
Yeah, Rab, do you wanna add?
Yeah, it's just, um, on the, on the stoping, it sounds like, you know, um. Even though there would be backfilling and there wouldn't be necessarily a pile of tailings that would leach. Um, the stoping itself is gonna create fissures, in my understanding is that the. Stopping itself is gonna create fissures in the rock that could then leach into groundwater, and then subsequently surface water. In the, um, the watershed regardless of whether or not it's actually already on the surface as a disposal method.
Yes, as, as well as historically, these things do end up breaking and leaching out. So it, it depends on the stability of the rock around it as well, of course. Uh, but there has been cases in the past of these things. Somehow cracking and breaking, as you're saying, and then they end up leaching out into groundwater.
And I don't really see an assessment of that. In here. So.
So that would be a good point.
That, I think that would be a very good objection in a letter, is that this is a possibility, it's happened before, there is no assessment, and it would be. Um. It, the, the cap, the, the division should not even consider this for formal acceptance until. There is a study on that that can be considered, or something along those lines.
Have, have you seen?
So, so from, from my perspective, I think that when, generally when you have a study, you find an engineer. And then the engineer will write, you know, um, to what degree of certainty there won't be, um, an issue. And really, basically, you're just getting an engineer to say. That the, you know, that there won't be an issue, that's what they're going to return to, um, this application, right? Um, so. Uh, I think that it would be probably in their best interest to support, to provide some type of. Engineering review, geotechnical report that said that there was stability in the rock, but. Um, you could also just approach it by saying that, you know. These engineering reviews, and so that, that would give them a door to pretty much, um, you know, dictate. The conversation with respect to how stable the rock is, I think.
Yeah, they.
If we don't want a mine in this area, probably the best approach is not to allow them to have the. You know, control of that conversation, rather just say. Um, you know, it has been shown that even with engineering reviews, the likelihood of failure of. Um, confinement of, of tailings and slurries is, um, high, so. Um, yeah, I guess.
Do we have, I mean, we need to, we would need to reference something, just us saying it is probably not gonna be very persuasive, right? So, do we have anything we can include that's, uh. Something that, that says that?
Yeah, I've been trying to look at different resources in regards to that.
So they have a emergency response plan that says geotechnical stability assessment. Um, and I'm trying to find it in the document to see what it actually is.
Yeah.
Cause it might not be like what we're asking for, you know?
Hello, what's up?
I don't know if this is sort of their section on that, but if you look at. When I turn it into a PDF, it's on page forty-two and forty-three, page G4, section 2.3 groundwater flow. And talks about fracture density.
Hmm, yeah.
Weird, um, I. Yeah, I would say. Um, I don't think so, what is the, what is the difference between what she currently paid and what she needs to pay? Pay the twenty-five? No, and I probably have to wait twenty-four hours to be sure, so at this point, at this point, she's paid us too much, if that was, you know? Or not at all?
Well, that's not very clear when I read that.
Right. Um. Rab, just so you know, I put in the chat a link to the questions document that John wanted us to consider. Um. I believe, yeah, the questions. Some of the questions are kind of like things that. The mine, like.
Yeah.
In the permit proposal, they should be answering.
All these happens. Sure, yeah. Okay. Yep. Right. And I missed.
Nothing, we were just, I think Rich was looking at groundwater.
There's this portion of the submission. It's a subsection, well, there's, it's really subsection. It's on page G2, and what we're talking about groundwater and fractures and. Stuff. The groundwater circulation and output, yes, can approach seven thousand feet in depth, and still return to the surface within the basin, but may take over five thousand years to do so.
Hubris of human, five thousand years.
I don't think that's necessarily, we're talking about human intervention, that's just talking about how these aquifers work, I think it's a general statement.
Okay.
So they're basically saying it's going to leak, but it's gonna take five thousand years?
No, I think this is just sort of some gibberish that they put in there. Um, sort of a general discussion of the way mountain aquifers can work. Without really tying it to their operations.
No specific study case, yeah, I mean, I, in my experience, our groundwater is relatively young, just because there's not a whole lot of void space within the rock. You know, it's really just like fissures and, and granite. But I'm not a pro.
Um, another. Point to note that was kind of in those, some of my buckets, not to get us distracted, but I think it's similar here. Is, um. That this is a pilot project for this company, and they are hoping to use this pilot project as something that they could then replicate in other areas that they mine. So even by their own admission, this isn't a well-thought-out, well-tested mining and. Everything else method, you know, there, there is some, um. Sense of this is kind of a test to see, does it actually work, can they actually fulfill their requirements?
Yeah, I would agree with that, I think that this location is not a great candidate for a pilot project due to the sensitivity of the environment surrounding.
Yeah.
And downstream of it, I guess.
What are you looking for, I can, I can.
Exhibit you.
What is it called, what's it, what is it giving you, let's see?
Uh, Environmental Protection Plan. Okay, the deactivator tailings are pumped to the paste or. I assume that's supposed to be waste storage area. Water yield in.
Could be paste.
To the paste storage area?
That could be a term that they use.
Yeah, I've not seen. Dry tailings will be mixed with lime and ore other stabilizing agents to achieve, achieve a neutral pH. The mixed, oh, paste is their term for slurry. The mixed paste will then be pumped or conveyed back underground into mineout workings for final placement. The process will leave a low moisture, non-acid generating material in old mine workings and voids. The permit is currently working with paste backfill technology companies to develop a pirate program to test paste backfilling as final tailing storage option. Development of the metal facility where only, will only occur if paste backfilling or another appropriate permit's tailored storage method is approved. Uh, uh, that's like all, all the information they get. Um. So I would say there's not adequate. Research and data. To. Understand their paste backfilling method, and that we would request a full. Technical review and environmental impact statement or something like that be done. Prior to them doing that.
What about something along the lines of consideration of this application is premature, or due to the fact that.
Yeah.
The primary methodology that they will use to, whatever they're doing with the paste, to extract. Extract minerals from the ore and, and stabilize tailings has yet to be subjected to testing. And the efficacy of any methods proposed is unknown.
Um, this is a process question, and maybe nobody here can answer this, but. There's the state permitting process, which the mine is going through right now. Is there a federal process that it must go to, to get its application approved? Like, is there an. EPA process where they would be required to submit a full environmental assessment? Or no, because it's just approved by the state?
According to Google.
They answer all the questions.
With their AI, says even if a mine goes through the state approval process, it may still need to go through a federal permitting process if. The mining operation occurs on federal land, which this doesn't, or involves federally regulated aspects like impacting waterways. Um, meaning multiple permits from federal and state agencies could be required. So.
So none of those two hundred and six acres is Forest Service land?
So the two hundred and six acres is an interesting thing. Um, when I read through this, I was trying to figure out what they were gonna do in two hundred and six acres.
Yeah.
Uh, because, and I don't know, the two hundred and six acres isn't some administrative thing, where they essentially include all the land that they have up there. Um, in case they, you know, have to drive a truck over it or something, because it really looks like. The stuff they're planning on doing on the surface. Is, um, that mill and associated things, or maybe. the two hundred and six acres is sort of the total area on top of where all the mining shafts are that they're going to do um explosives and drilling and stuff like that. It's unclear to me what that two hundred and six acres is. Um, yeah, so I don't, I don't know.
I, yeah, I know that the ten acres that they have been offering under is a lesser permit.
Right.
And that's what they have had is this lesser level permit. But yeah, as far as the expansion amount, like why two hundred and six and not one hundred and seventy-five?
Right.
I'm.
There's no, I couldn't find like a map or anything like that, that, that explained it when I looked.
The pre-mining and mining plan maps?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I thought.
Um, there are a bunch of quit claim here from your question the other night. Um, so it does seem like they have contacted all those landowners and gotten quit claim deeds through those parcels.
Okay, so here's the different answer from a different AI.
Yeah.
Um, that says if a mining project is located entirely in state-owned or private land, it typically only requires state level permits. Assuming no federal resources or jurisdictions are impacted, blah, 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 blah. Um, under the Clean Water Act, if a mine involves discharging into or dredging filling wetlands, um, they would need a Army Corps of Engineers certification.
Yeah.
And then there's if it impacts endangered species, insufficient wildlife, and significant air pollution might need EPA. So um I don't know that any of those are covered by this.
Okay.
I didn't see anything like that in there.
Yeah.
But again, this is just an AI giving me that answer.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, so, so sorry, I didn't hear some of what Rich said, but um because the EPA is expected to be gutted. I think that the federal government won't really provide a check on this and we can.
What I was reading is the EPA, EPA would probably only get involved if there was an endangered species or the Clean Air Act was, was implicated. And I don't really see anything in there that made it, made me think that would even be the case.
Wouldn't there be watershed implications? I missed some of what.
Yeah, that, that would be if it, if, if there was a planned discharge, or I guess we could say, you know, a certain discharge or something like that into waters of the United States, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers would have to do a certification. Um, but there's nothing in this document that indicates that that's foreseen, so we would have to show that it would happen, which I guess goes along with the fracturing thing. Is that a potential for um an impact on waters of the United States?
Well, and the way I understand it is that I think that was the first time around. Part of what got at the EPA is that we did change it from being in a floodplain to being, to really just protecting wetlands. So it used to be that more of the floodplain was protected, but not now.
Well, the way I read it is, you know, just as for the jurisdiction of the federal government to be involved is if it's not involving federal land or something like that, you have to have a navigable water and if the wetland is impacted, um, it, it has to be immediately adjacent to a, a navigable water. Um, and while there are wetlands up there, I don't even know that Boulder Creek would qualifies a navigable water in the mountains. Um, so.
It should, it should because it only has to run um three quarters of the year to be considered a navigable waterway. So Coon Track Creek, I would think is absolutely a navigable waterway. The question is, do any of the wetlands that are up there flow into Coon Track Creek or Coon Track Creeks?
Yeah.
Water, groundwater source? Or Outports Rainbow Lakes? Like that creek that goes along the five oh five towards Rainbow? Where does that end?
I'm uh sharing my screen here.
Okay.
Can you guys see Netherland?
No, we can see you. We don't, I don't see.
We don't see a shared screen.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, how about now?
It's loading.
We see a map now.
Okay, cool. So that's their current operation, I believe. And yeah, based on watershed, all of that is coming into Middle Boulder Creek once it reaches town. Either above ground or underground.
What? You, you move, the map is kind of glitchy. Sorry, because you're sharing your screen. But where you pointed to didn't look like it was high enough, but I'm not sure where you were pointing to.
Yeah.
So.
I think you, this is Caribou Hill. This is Caribou Hill.
Yeah, that is Caribou Hill. Well, Caribou is a little bit too, little bit to the down from that. Yep. That's their primary operation. And then they have another operation up, down slope of Caribou Hill.
Yeah. So, you know, this is, this is all Coon Track Creek, I guess. And that is all going to hit, um, based on the watershed, it's all going to hit um Middle Boulder Creek via North Beaver Creek.
Yeah, so I asked one of the AIs I use whether Coon Creek Crack, Coon Track Creek would be a navigable water. And it indicates if it flows reliably, either perennially or intermittently into a navigable water like the South Flat River, it would fall under federal jurisdiction as a tributary. I think that's a yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But, so, yeah, should we have a navigable water? But do we have a discharge?
Into it.
Into it.
Right.
Well, I mean, maybe Boulder County should be included in here because it's hitting their reservoir.
Yep.
Yes, and they will have to go through a county process at some point, but I understand the way they're doing it is they're seeking the state permit first before they invest in all the other permits that they'll need. So it will go to the county. I just wasn't sure if it was going to go to the feds at all for any reason.
Yeah, I mean, I think even if it did go to the feds, they're expected to be pretty understaffed soon, if not presently, so.
Um, yeah, it would just be another, sorry, it would just be another comment period that, you know, would stall out the process and would allow us to do more research and yeah, comment some more.
True.
I guess I'm just thinking of topography in that area. When you come off the five oh five, it goes back up. So where does this stream?
I mean, there's definitely data out there that can um show you like where watersheds are. Yeah.
Um, can you send me the link? Because I, I just have a PDF now. Can you send me the link to their actual application? Because I want to throw into this AI I use and ask it to draw up an injection. It should be able to do that.
Um. Do you, do you mean like this, this page? Okay, yeah.
Can you throw that in the chat? Because the link that I had in my email was a dead link.
Okay, yeah.
I think it might be a document size issue.
Could see that.
Yeah, I had to download it in two PDF files.
Yeah, they only let you download like three hundred pages, right?
Too big, yeah.
See. My computer is going very slow right now.
Yeah, see, that's, this is, that's what I was looking at is this is the Coon Track Creek here.
Mm-hmm.
This is where the wetlands are in this creek.
So it might be on the other side?
And, and they are different tributaries.
Yeah. And, but do they meet up?
No.
Okay, then that, yeah. Would might be a different watershed.
So wetlands, unless there's any on Coon Track Creek on the side of Caribou Road, but I don't know of any.
There is a wetland. Uh, but it's not, I think it flows into Coon Track Creek, but I don't think that it would really be plausible that the mine would impact it. Unless it dust or something did.
Yeah.
Because if you go, you know, if you go up, um, the, there's that old abandoned sort of building off to the side of the forest road. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about. Um, if you go to Caribou Hill and you take that road that goes up to Caribou Hill instead of, and if you keep going, it goes to sort of flat area.
Mm-hmm.
And you go down the, down the hill a little bit in that flat area. There's a wetland, there's a pond, I hear frogs up there and stuff like that, but I think that is probably upstream of the mine. So um, it's, I think it's above it. And I don't think we could really claim water is going to flow into that unless you have some kind of fracturing that's going to discharge into there.
Well, and I think that's the area I'm talking about that is part of.
I checked your email, make sure it came through.
It's part of Caribou Creek, not Coon Track Creek.
Okay. That makes sense. I haven't gotten anything yet.
Okay. And is the email ormanrich@gmail?
Oh, you sent that one? Let me check.
That's the one I have.
That's not what I normally use.
Oh, what's the one you normally use?
Keymasteratme.com.
The key, oh, okay. I wasn't sure who that was.
It's okay.
So would you like me to send? Okay, for, for SAB stuff though, would you like me to use the Key Master email?
I, I just use that ormanrich generally for stuff that I think I'm going to get junk out of.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. I will update that. You know, if that is the one on the SAB, um.
I think I usually get emails to that from SAB.
Okay.
We can get that changed, guess.
Yeah, we, I'll double check which emails on there.
I think it's that one.
Okay. Thekeymasteratme.com?
Yeah.
Okay. Would having a map of like watersheds be helpful? For like detailed in that area?
I think we determined that it's not gonna be necessary to dig into that for this area.
Okay, I might just confirm.
Because it's really just gonna be in Track Creek.
Okay, um, I cannot actually access the document through this.
It's, it's not letting you. I, yeah, I just copied the link, um.
And the AI was.
Go to the, if you go to the last two SAB agendas, it has the link in here.
I didn't think I've got the same problem with that, though.
Yeah, I, I ran into an issue too, and I tried to get it from some, I think John's link, and I had to um like enable cookies or something on the site. And then I just like refreshed it a few times and it worked.
Cookies, cookies are not enabled, okay?
That might be the issue.
I, I set it to allow pop-ups, but I guess I gotta allow cookies.
Um, hopefully that works.
Let's see where cookies are.
Okay, here's their letter from Army Corps of Engineers. It's in this packet.
Oh, they have a letter, okay.
Based on the information provided, Department of Army permit will not be required for this activity. Although a Department of Army permit will not be required, it does not eliminate the requirements for other applicable federal, state, tribal, local permits.
Well, of course, we can say that.
The standard disclaimer. It does look like the, oh, their mine backfill wells are part of EPA rule. And it says attached, so there is this.
Uh, quick sidebar, but they're looking at repopulating uh different plants um in order to prevent runoff and erosion. And some of them are juniper, which sounds like a really bad idea for a high fire area.
Do they have a list of all the vegetation or is, did they just act that as an example?
Uh, they have a list of the number of plants and their species. Um, it's in exhibit E, table E six, E five. Yeah, there's a pretty much most of the. Pretty much most of the, the beginning of Exhibit E.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would say that. The wetlands are in this area.
Uh, so this is, this whole area here is a wetland. This is a whole area of wetlands. And then there's a little wetland up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Army Corps of Engineers. Already signed off.
Well, I think that they probably just signed off saying, yeah.
They said it's not subject to an Army Corps permit. But was that on the ten acres or on this? Because that was in twenty twenty one.
I think that's based on where the discharge, well, okay, but I don't think they're really planning a difference in where the discharge would be.
You think it'll still be at the same spot?
That's where the mill is gonna be. Okay.
Yeah, you're right. It's just a mine, it's just a map of the area, but it doesn't show like on the map, like where all their. Facilities are gonna be.
What I'm gonna send you. Do you prefer Cass?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Cass. I, I just think it was Cassidy, so.
No, it's fair, but people say both.
That's why, okay, if you could, um. Take a look at this and then forward it to the people in this meeting, because I don't want to have to search and figure emails. And I'm not really sure how great this is. But I asked this little A I I work with to draft an objection letter to this application.
Okay.
And, um, I just sent.
Uh, your audio just dropped off the meeting, Rich. Could you, yeah, all I'm seeing is Brittany. I'm not seeing anybody else.
I don't know, it just happened to them.
I'm just gonna text them now.
Yeah, I was texting Cass too. All right, I'm, I think I'm rejoining the meeting now.
Yeah, you're on.
Sorry about that. Um, I've been getting notifications on here that the wifi is unstable. So it might have been that issue.
Could you fill us in on the objection letter that Rich drafted with A I?
Yeah, so I just forwarded that, um, you should be getting it. Hey.
Thanks.
Jack just came in, Brit and Rab are online right now.
Awesome.
You know.
I mean, I agree with their subheading so far. They did a good job.
Oh, no, this A I did a great job.
Is this one of the ones you paid for?
I do pay for it.
It's not like a free.
I use Prock, and, um, which is, is the best A I that you can use as a civilian.
P A file.
Okay, let me ask, what E P A file do you want?
C O five zero 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 dash one two zero seven five.
Give me that again.
C zero, C O.
Yeah.
Five zero 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 zero.
How many zeros?
Four.
Okay.
That's one two zero seven five.
These are from John, seems to consider.
Um, the A I letter says that there is, um, water quality monitoring taking place. But, um, that only happens at the effluent of the, their current retention pond. And I put in the chat a snip from E point one point thirteen where it says. Post-reclamation water monitoring is not anticipated. And, um. Yeah. They're not planning on doing any monitoring after some baseline period of time.
So. Require treatment.
Yeah, I, I was running into a similar. Kind of question as far as. In twenty twenty one, the mine was fined, you know, several thousand dollars. By the Colorado Department of Health for a violation. And then they had to submit water quality testing every quarter after that. However, it seems like once they got the approval from C D P H E. That they're no longer out of compliance, that they don't have to do testing. So what, how I understand it is that they would be required to do testing if. Any issues were found, but if there's not currently like a fine or a notice of non-compliance. That they don't have to test.
But.
But I'm not.
So even more than, so even more than like reported testing, they're not even expecting to do any monitoring themselves. Zero monitoring. Um, so they're like, even if they, they could never be found not in compliance, because there'd be no monitoring responsibility under this plan.
But there is, but there is an annual respect inspection required. And I think the annual inspection requires water sampling. I could be wrong, but I have an old. Inspection.
That may be the case, but they're not gonna be holding any documentation on water monitoring in that inspection that might incriminate themselves.
Yeah.
Come on in. It's across the hall. We're opening a different door.
Yeah, for sure. And that was, you know, one of my concerns in general is that. They just don't seem to care about rules and regulations and compliance. And they seem like a kind of company that's gonna ask for forgiveness instead of for permission. And that's like a general company culture issue that I'm finding with them. I, I'm just trying to figure out if it says that they're not gonna be responsible for monitoring. Because maybe the C D H, C D P H E is responsible for that and not the mine themselves. Or. If that is a large concern to make a point about.
Yeah, well, so my, my understanding is they're gonna backfill with the slurry, cap it with some concrete. And then, um, never touch it or monitor it again. Or any of the, uh, water in the creek or downstream of it ever again. So that's. That's my understanding of what's happening.
That doesn't sound. That doesn't surprise me, to be honest. Like, when I've interacted with. Uh, contamination, it gets found by someone else often, and then they trace it back. And then the burden of proof transfers to the company who created it.
And that's what Melody was saying, asking for forgiveness instead of.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying that may not be limited to this company and process. That may be something that.
Mm-hmm.
So would we, we would say that we request the permit. Um, not be approved unless they do do consistent water monitoring, right?
Sense. I cannot find nothing on the E P A website.
No, I can't either. It might be something where you have to file an actual records request.
So in the, um, letter that the Board of Trustees has drafted. Um, a lot of these things, I believe, can be added as like. These are our concerns and these, this is what we would like to see, um. And. These are questions like that they haven't answered or need to be more specific on.
Then I, I think I like that.
Yeah, so there is a discharge test of the discharge. Every year with their annual inspection.
And that's, is the annual inspection just while it's operating?
Think so.
Okay.
Though I'm not positive. Either that or it was only included in this last one, like I said, because they were out of compliance for so long. Um, I guess one thing in the letter that I noticed. And this is more, I guess, a question for the V O T and the lawyer, but it doesn't actually say we object. Oh, this letter says we're requesting a hearing to be informed more on it. And that was a little disappointing to me reading this. I, I would like us to officially object.
Could be that's the proper procedure that the lawyer suggests. I mean, I don't know. Could be that you don't object here, you ask for the hearing, and you object after the hearing. I don't know.
Well, and so one of his questions on here is. The public notice period ends on April second. We'd like to request a hearing but are uncertain on how to do so. What I was reading in the actual statute about this process, if there is a valid objection filed. They've deemed that it's a valid objection, then there will automatically be a hearing. Again, I could be wrong, but that was my understanding after reading. The statute. And so I, I guess I would say I personally am in favor of not. Asking for a hearing. I think we could ask for that additionally, but I, my. I hope would be that the SAB and the Town of Netherland both agree that we object to the passage of this permit in its current form.
And I think if the lawyers involved, we should just make sure that it's that we're allowed to object at this point. And it's not premature.
I mean, I know from Patrick, he's allowed to object.
Okay, then we should.
As, as individual citizens.
If we, if citizens can object, I think the town can.
Yeah, and so then I guess my other question is. We're working on this board to, this, you know, letter to submit as a government entity. But we're also gonna want people from the public, public. To submit comments if they can. And I'm wondering, there's just a law in this draft letter. That might not be applicable to a citizen, and I'm wondering if we should make another version. To share with the greater public after V O T approval, of course, to share. But to say, if you don't know what to comment, but you know you oppose the mine, you know, here's a copy paste letter you can use to file your comment.
Rab, are all of these screenshots from the?
Terminal activists.
Document.
Well, but I don't know how, we're supposed to have a whole bunch of identical letters.
They are.
They are.
Try to include the, um, the page number or the section where appropriate.
So.
Yeah, specifically, um. You know, these screenshots I thought were particularly important. Because they, this, this first one just basically says that, yeah, the, the fractures are within. Uh, crystalline rock and don't have retention like.
Recharge.
Elementary. Um, but there, the first one notably has like a, um, logical error in it. Um, first it says that, um, the groundwater. Um, if there's any impacts to groundwater, it would. Did I lose everybody? No.
No, you're still here.
Yeah, so this first says that if there's a, an impact to groundwater, be restricted to the private wells, like. And there's not very many around, and that Netherwind relies on surface water. And then later on, they say. Um, that there are artisanal wells that are, um. That are, uh, fed from this groundwater that ultimately, um. Go into, not the town of Netherwind's water supply, but at least the reservoir. Um, and you know, there's that, there's that spring on Caribou. I'm sure that that's one of those. Um, and, and all of those.
As well as all the trousers that have wells down there, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And not to mention, you know, County Boulder's gonna have their, uh. Yeah, so there's a little bit of a logical error in their, in their reasoning there.
This is just my notes, um. But I'm gonna send these out afterwards. But basically, I'm just.
Yes, your, your, your explanation is, even if it's entrapped in groundwater. That enters surface water and we would wanna. I, I think the other thing that occurs to me is if, if they have, and if, if their way of catching it is annual monitoring of effluent, like. By the time, well, because it's deep in the groundwater.
Yeah.
There's a ti- time delay where you're going to have, like, you could potentially have impacts that take years to. Reach the groundwater and then are basically like.
Exactly.
It's almost impossible.
There, yeah, there's almost two different timelines for that groundwater. So there's the immediate discharge that goes through the wastewater treatment facility. From the actual operations that are going on above ground.
Right.
Then secondarily, there's the slurry that is put into the, the shafts afterwards. That could then potentially leach into groundwater, and that we're talking about for the next hundreds of years that could become.
Well, and there's also.
And so the, the retention time.
Other things getting in the groundwater.
In the, in this proposal is anywhere between one month and one hundred years. So their water monitoring is not appropriate for the retention time of the aquifer. If they're only expecting to do it annually. I think that's another key. Highlight here, and that's in that last one, one month to a hundred years for shallow water specific to this region.
So if, if retention time being the. How long the groundwater takes to reach the surface, Rab, or what is that?
Yeah, the, the time from when it goes from snow melt or precipitation into the ground and then back out of the ground.
Okay. I mean, that's. This is like an impossible range to manage.
Yeah, it says, deep groundwater circulation in Alpine Basins can approach seven thousand feet in depth and still return to surface within a basin. But may take over five thousand years to do so. But it just, I mean, it says may, like, that what is that really based on?
Um, is John gonna be?
Uh, I was told he was going to.
Yes, I have a lot of questions.
Yeah.
And or I will continue emailing Patrick.
But can I ask a dumb question? What is? What is the source, like, what is the source of contaminant of concern for, like, fracture, subsurface fracturing, like?
Lead is definitely one of the big ones.
And this, so if you, if you go to G dash six, it lists some of the major minerals in the, um, this specific Colorado mineral belt by USGS survey. And they call it a polymetallic vein and they list zinc, copper, lead, silver sulfides, which are acidic and toxic and gold, but the gold is also a bound form of gold. It's not elemental gold. Dolomite, calcite, yeah, they go on.
Yeah, I mean.
Uh, G dash six, G dash seven.
Okay, thanks. So the, the just increasing the subsurface exposure of those within, within the mining context? Like by fracturing more surface area, more transport in a way that presumably was not happening previous, previously.
Yeah, um, according to this doc, the document they provided the application, the sulfite, the sulfates in pyrite contribute to, um, sulfuric acid, basically, once it dissolves a bit in water. So if you get the pyrite exposed to water, you end up with sulfuric acid.
Great. And then you could have that free up a lot of other things that are bound previously. Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, I think the, their previous issue with their release was cadmium and something else. I forget what the other one was, but that's not even listed here. But for sure, based on their previous release, there is cadmium present as well.
Well, in, uh, I'm, I still haven't found a full description of which materials they're trying to process on site. Because for me, that's almost the more important discharge contaminant possibilities is any chemicals they're using to process this stuff. Not necessarily the heavy metals that come out of the ground and get put into the water, right? But the other other things they use.
Yeah. Um, the application references the mill, even though they say that the mill isn't part of this application.
Yeah, but does it say whether they're gonna be milling gold, silver, both?
Well, so the mill is, they're just crushing, the mill is just crushing up stuff, right? And they're crushing up ore, which contains all those items in G dash six, which include the pyrite, the lead, the iron. All of that will be turned into really fine powder, basically. Um, and then yeah. So, but again, the mill, once the proposed mill is fully designed and permitted, that's in the application, even though it doesn't include it. So they're gonna be milling lead. Um, and they're gonna be milling the ore, which includes all of these components onsite. And that's in G dash seven, 3.1.1 operational water. So I don't know how much chemical processing they're gonna have, but they're definitely going to be creating like really high surface area ore that has these contaminants in it.
So maybe what, so in my understanding, when they do this kind of mining where they crush up the ore, don't you then have to use different processes to extract the gold that you want out of the rest of all that crushed ore? That's the process I'm talking about.
Yeah, and historically.
That does involve chemicals for gold. It depends on the materials.
Exactly. And historically it was cyanide. I'm still trying to dig through this to find out what they're using uh, in order to extract gold now. But yeah, historically it was the cyanide that would bind to the gold.
They're not necessarily, like milling doesn't necessarily involve that though, right? Like that is not necessarily happening onsite. Well, I don't think. Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, that's the point of the mill. The mill is to extract the gold and, and silver.
Okay, I thought milling was the mechanical process.
Well, yeah, but you don't, but. There, what you do is you mill and then you concentrate and extract.
Okay.
Refine, yeah, so.
So the issue here is that this is a stepwise process in that the mill and that scope is not included in this application. So we don't have a lot of information of whether or not they would be doing the concentration that Rick's talking about, Rich is talking about from,
Right.
you know, after milling the ore.
Yeah.
Um, but I still think that there are concerns with creating, you know, lead containing dust, basically from the milling process. And you know, this is all, you'd, you'd create really high surface area milled material. And if any of that, you know, was released, it would be into a waterway pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And it does say they have a chemical storage facility.
The.
Doesn't say what chemicals they're storing.
I mean, you need that for construction, any kind of construction site as well, usually.
Okay, I think they're talking about chemicals to treat the water.
Yeah.
A list that does any chemicals in the maximum quantities to be stored onsite at any time can be seen in table U dash two. Met sorb H M R G, 2,000 pounds, 72 gallons. That's the only thing in the table.
Well, can you spell that?
M E T S O R B.
Yeah.
And then capital H M R G.
It's for removing heavy metals.
Yeah, so it's for the wastewater.
Treatment.
Treatment, okay.
Titanium dioxide.
And then there's a materials containment plan. Maybe in there. There will be destruction from the storage containment. Your AI also pulled out something about economic feasibility, that it was gonna cost too much or something?
I, I think that may just be some generic stuff that wanted to put in there.
Can you send me the AI summary?
Oh, yeah, I'll forward it.
Well, my, my wife suggested I do the same thing. I was like.
Well, it's more of a, hey, AI, come up with an objection we can file.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
So. But I wouldn't have thought of that, so.
Yeah, it says insufficient financial assurance for reclamation.
Okay.
The bond amount, the bond amount appears inadequate to cover the full cost of reclaiming a gold mine of this scale for particularly for addressing acid mine drainage, chemical, chemical residue cleanup and perpetual water treatment needs.
That's not bad. That sounds good. It's way better than I would have expected.
I know.
But I think that there's not a perpetual water treatment need based on this application, right? They're just putting a slurry in a pit and they're not gonna monitor it or treat it. They're removing their water treatment facility as part of the application. I mean, as far as, I'm only on page 80, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're, we're all on different pages, I think.
But, yeah.
Inspection program, facility component, above ground container will be tested following a regular schedule and whenever materials are made, but it does, whenever repairs are made. But it has monthly slash annual slash enduring schedule and inspections in parentheses. So I'm not sure what their regular schedule is. All above ground piping will be tested monthly. Burried piping tested whenever a section of buried line is exposed or at the time of installation, modification, construction, replacement.
Okay, just for the laughs. They currently have a picture, figure 16 on page 90, that shows a backwash and settling tank. And it's a dumpster.
Oh, wonderful. Wow. Is that, you know, reusing materials? Nice.
It's a dumpster and it has like some, like, yeah, it's bad.
How, how are they gonna guarantee that a rusting dumpster is not gonna leak?
I mean, I'd take a rusting dumpster, dumpster over a U S T any day, cause you can see the leakage when it happens. But.
Yeah, it's gotta be a wide pond that has a big cut in it, like.
Can't see, cause you only can see the outside.
That's their settling tank. And so is it just open air on top? I would assume so.
Yeah, that's, that's their settling tank is just open air on top. And I don't think that's the major concern. But yeah.
Except for when we're dealing with 100 and 100 mile winds.
Um, have you guys seen the, um, page 97, it lists their environmental site solution for removing zinc and cadmium that are currently over regulatory limits in the met sorb. That's what they're using it for. Yeah, basically they're saying that they're currently over uh, limit for zinc and cadmium and they're gonna use the met sorb to get within the limit.
But it also says that a pilot test has to be conducted.
Yeah, I guess just my takeaway from this is that you guys are already, you know, not in compliance with zinc and cadmium for your current operation. What makes us believe that you can you know, be in compliance for a newer operation for zinc and cadmium?
Yeah, agreed.
Or anything else, I guess. It's crazy that a volunteer committee is reviewing this. I, I'm just blown away.
I mean.
This is.
Not, no.
This is what I was trained for.
Hopefully Boulder County is looking at it and City of Boulder.
Yeah, they are.
So.
As are, um, the Save the Colorado is gonna, they have a lawyer representing them and will file an objection. Um, also the Watershed Collective, several other nonprofits will also be doing this. And I've reached out to them and said, hey, please share. Yeah, I've reached out and said, hey, please share any of the things that you pull out with us. Um, so they're kind of doing the same process we are and hopefully will share some information with us when they're done.
Um, there's a good chance John will not make it to this meeting, just because he had said he was gonna join at 4:30 and I haven't heard from him. Well, I haven't heard from him at all. We have, we've reached out, so he must be stuck in his other meeting. Um, so maybe if we have specific questions we want to ask him, we should write those down.
I, I guess I'm trying to understand what the process here is for something like this, um, because it is something that, you know, SAB has been keeping its tabs on and the V O T has been keeping its tabs on. But I don't feel like we're working together. And I would like to not feel like we're working as two siloed units.
So, so. So what is the process for basically?
I guess I, I would envision it that generally the V O T would say, oh, the mine's opening up their operations again. Let's get anybody who's a stakeholder and get input from them. And so at that point, they should have reached out to us and been like, hey, Sev, will you give us a recommendation on this? But we weren't really asked. I was just keeping tabs on it. So we are. But I, there is some sort of formal process that should happen there.
Right.
And then the other thing that I have for John is can we draft a public letter that the public can use to comment with? And get the B O T to approve that at some time before the comment period ends. Because while we're making our comment, I also, as Melody Baumhoffer, Netherland resident, am gonna make a comment, right?
Yeah.
And so, so I'm not gonna care about the town of Netherland and all that stuff in the intro of the draft letter. So a different kind of focus of I'm Mr. Resident, can we draft a letter to share with our residents so that we can get everybody to comment?
So the letter would, the intention would be to have residents sign off on that or to?
Residents would submit the comments themselves.
Yeah.
And we just give them a copy paste template that they could use.
We could help fill the expertise gap.
Yeah.
Which is considerable.
Considerable, even for us. There's an expertise.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Right?
The, yeah.
So like one, so what I asked Patrick at the mining division was can you point me to an easily publicly accessible document that lists kind of the main criteria that are gonna be considered for the permit?
Oh, John's on no.
And he says, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're talking about. And then I ended up getting the link to the whole statute. But I think being able to have some sort of public facing information, like you said, to kind of fill that. But I think being able to have some sort of public-facing information, like you said, to kind of fill that expertise gap. That is bullet points, you know, not the full twenty-four pages of rule number three and rule number six in the statute. But just bullet points of they're considering environmental impacts. They're not considering traffic congestion. You know, um, because the, the Department of Mining didn't seem to have that document already. Put together, that's.
I put it together and it's in my staff report for tomorrow night, all the criteria.
It's John, just so everyone is aware.
Oh, sorry. I apologize, guys.
You're good.
No, we were just talking about, is he gonna come? We don't know. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, because Rich, Rich, Melody and Jack are in the room with me, just so that you know who's here.
Yeah, sorry, guys, we. I, I, we had audio issues the other night and I was, I think what I was asking for was a couple of times and I think it didn't come across correctly. And I got, there was another meeting, but I'm sorry about that. I hope you guys have had a good conversation. And I think, Melody, you're right, the more concerned letters that we have, the better. And one of the intentions of the process at the B O T would be to introduce that this needs to happen by the second of April. And then to have a finalized draft of the letter on the eighteenth of March. And then that can also be used with the criteria in the staff report to generate the letter like you were talking about for the community. Because that is important. And the criteria are pretty broad-based. Did you guys already talk about the criteria or?
No, I'm, I'm, other than just reading the straight statute. I, I haven't been able to find like a plain English broken-down version of that criteria. So if you could send that to us, that would be great.
Yeah, and then really quick, let me just pull it up because I can, there's eight criteria and then I can just kind of tell you and then I'll give you the document. But basically, what you're looking at is. Hold on, sorry, that's the wrong one. They're actually pretty easy to answer for our perspective. The thing that I would just tell you is like, one of the complicated parts here is that. We can ask for a hearing, but you have to have, it's like an evidentiary based process and we don't have the ability to collect evidence. So that's one thing in the process. But basically, the process, there's multiple steps, so there's a submission and review which has happened. There is a technical review that can take up to a year potentially. There's a public notification. Sorry?
The technical review happened?
That's underway currently, so that can take up to a year. It depends on comments. Basically, it can take three sixty-five days is what they say.
Those comments could be from the community or those comments are from.
Everyone, so there'll be comments from.
Their technical reviewers.
Yeah, you don't have to have standing to present comments. The more technical the comments can be, the better. But we're allowed to, what you don't want to be is like a newbie. You want to make sure they're like based in, in like some kind of evidentiary question or something like that. We're in the public notification and comment period that ends on April second. There can be a public hearing, but D R M S, which is the Controlling Agency Division Reclamation Mining and Safety. They have to decide to hold that hearing and there's like, that's where the evidence. Thing is a question, I think that needs to be in everybody's. Everybody's concerns is like, how do we provide you with evidence? Because we're not gonna be allowed on their site. We don't know what the rock fracturing on the site looks like. We don't know, you know, things like that. And so there needs to be a process for that. Um, then a final decision would be made, potentially, that has to be made within a year. It's likely that they would probably come back one way or the other, um, with a new application if they're denied. If they are approved, the next step for them would be to go to Boulder County. And they would need some permitting through Boulder County as well, but that would be a separate process. And then, either way, there's going to be ongoing compliance and monitoring. If they are denied, they could be moved into an inactive mine status. Which basically means that they need to be doing all the things remediation-wise that they're required to do. Um, the key considerations for this, the first one is environmental impact. Effects on water, air quality, soil stability and local ecosystems. And I think one of the big concerns there is that this is fractured rock and we know it's the same mineral belt that exists in the Clear Creek County Superfund Site. So there's like nickel, cadmium, lead, like all the heavy metals are basically, should be present in there. And I think with the kind of rock that's there, it's fractured and this is a stoping process, which means it's basically like hard rock mining. It could mean that water starts moving in funny ways and it could be percolating through the rock and getting minerals out and all that kind of thing. And if you have a spring pop out in your house where there didn't used to be a spring that has heavy metals, that could cause an issue. Um, public safety.
From an occurrence in this town.
Right, agreed.
Springs popping up out of nowhere. There's a reason that hill is called Big Springs.
There was new ones on the C dot project that came up that nobody knew about, which is interesting.
Every, every new construction project in this town that I've been around for where they dug out a foundation has encountered a new spring.
That's crazy. It's kind of cool, though, but.
Steve's building.
Um, other criteria, public health and safety, risk to nearby residents, hazardous material exposure, safety concerns. Reclamation plans, they need to make sure that they have a good plan for after operation sees. They also have to have a surety and that's one of my questions, is the surety enough to cover? Some sort of worst-case environmental disaster and I'm not confident that it is. Yeah, it would be bad. I mean, if they start a new super fun site, that could be a lot of money potentially.
I just wanted to say your audio is kind of cutting in and out a bit. Um, maybe could you turn your video off and that might help, just because no one else can see you anyway, so.
Is this better?
Hopefully, yeah, we'll see.
Well, the other ones are compliance with regulations. They have to follow all state and federal laws. Financial assurance, which is that surety bond and other bonds that may be required. Impact on natural and cultural resources, so I think impacts to the wildlife there and the nearby community is, is relevant. There is also historic buildings up there from that old mill site that are potentially impacted. Technical adequacy, the feasibility of proposed safety measures and operational plans and then public feedback, which could be anything. But I think the goal would be is to have feedback that like is relevant to the criteria in the decision-making process. That's basically what happens. It says any party has standing to submit objections, but there is this like legal. Hurdle that we have to have good cause to get that hearing. So that's kind of the criteria. I'll send this document to all of you so you have it. Yeah, if you don't mind sending it, I would, that would be good. There's some questions in that email I sent you earlier too about these things.
I printed those out, so everyone has a copy here.
Do we know how often these permits are considered these days? I mean, is this a yearly thing? Do they do all the time? Are they rare?
Uh, they're increasing because mining technology has been changing and there's some ways to get at this gold that was left behind. That wasn't previously possible. And then the rare earth minerals as well, like we know that that is a pretty big national issue. And so these D M O operations in our region are actually fairly common. I've seen, we had a couple in Clear Creek County. And in some ways they're a good thing because once you have that designation, you're required to have more remediation and things like that. The question just is, is the technical adequacy of the system and whether or not it's been fully studied and. Um, engineered properly and all those things, that's probably the most reasonable question point. Or if they can even do it safely at all, because you know Barker Reservoir, for instance, that's a water source for so many people. And once it's, you know, once it's degraded for lead or something like that, that concern is always gonna exist. And so there is some impacts potentially to water rights and, and all that kind of stuff as well.
So the document that you're talking about, John, is your aim, right? Because it has the key considerations and.
I have a draft letter in there, but it doesn't have all the considerations listed because we do need to talk to everyone and make sure everybody has a chance to weigh in. But I think like for me, the things that I understand is the biggest concerns are the rock fracturing and understanding that. The expanded size of the site, whether the water treatment facility was designed to manage all of the water that could be through the site. What happens if water goes in funny ways? You know, those kinds of questions, the impact on wildlife, the air quality concerns that could happen from milling operations there. Those are the ones that I think are. Most valuable based on like what, also the road, that road is not designed to a traffic standard that allows big trucks to be driven on it. I mean, they already get. They basically can't go around that one hairpin turn that's getting, you know, close up to the top there. So. I don't know that they've got all of this figured out. The other thing, though, is that Boulder County is gonna ask the same questions when they go through their permitting process. So that's part of the equation, I think.
Yeah, so when I was emailing back and forth with Patrick. He said that impacts such as increased traffic on a county road. Is not something that they really have jurisdiction over. That be, um, dealt with. Under a different jurisdiction and not the state, like I, I don't know what process they'll have to go through for the county to get their zoning approved, but. I think it would be that process.
We've talked to some of the other stakeholders and I think it fits under the environmental. Impact. Because of the greatly expanded scope of the mining operations, going from like nine acres to two hundred and ten or whatever it is. So there are some air quality concerns and things like that. And so maybe it needs to be really targeted to like that, I guess. But it's, you know, the truck traffic is part of the mining operation typically. But you're right about the processing or the permit processing, I think. Agreed.
Yeah, yeah, because I was trying to get a sense from Patrick of what kind of statements are they gonna consider and really look at? And what kind of the statements are just gonna be extra words on the page that they don't want. Um, and that, that specific one of increased road traffic. Was one he said that they wouldn't really consider or have jurisdiction over.
What about like saying the dust that would be kicked up by that increased road traffic? That is a air pollution issue. For the diesel. I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
I agree with you.
There's probably a way to say it in a way that makes sense. I do think that in terms of the engineering of the road, it's gonna be Boulder County, but I think like what you're looking at is like. How many houses do you think are up there that go on Caribou Road right now? Like whatever that vehicle trip is, like. It's gonna probably more than double, like I think the Frye Quarry in Clear Creek, when they started running more rock from there. It increased trips by like sixty trips a day, which does have air and water quality concerns and, you know, just general operational concerns. So there, there may be a way to make that argument, but I hear your point. You don't want anything in there that looks like we just don't want. It has to be like actual concerns.
So at the beginning of this meeting, we talked about a number of concerns, um, which I wrote down. And I'll send to you, John, um, so that you have those notes.
Um, are any of you available tomorrow evening? And I realize that's a big thing, board meetings are long, but I just want to make sure that if you'd like to come to the board meeting to discuss with them, that you're welcome.
Yes, six o'clock?
Yeah, I'll definitely be there.
Executive session at six and the regular meeting at seven. And then the intention would be to have a draft by the eighteenth, which we can work on. And then I like the idea of having it. I, I would like to have a template letter for people. Um, I have had some concerns about that, like how, I don't know how to write this thing, so I think that would be a kind of a good thing. Um, that maybe we can collaborate on.
So we're, we're asking Sav members to come at seven?
Yeah, the executive session's at six and so there, that will be not public and then, um, the public part starts at seven. And you could do public comments or you could listen or whatever, however you want to do it. Excuse me.
That sounds good. I'll be there. And that's upstairs in the main room where they normally.
I'll be there as well.
There's also, this is unrelated to our conversation, but C C four C A, um. Is sending, it has a letter that they want elected officials to sign on to, basically supporting the continuation of the. Um, Inflation Reduction Act funding. So, and I, I guess it needs to be signed by March fifth and I just got the email today.
Who's that going to?
Potentially Senator, was it Senator Hickmuber? I think it's going like the federal level.
So as we were saying, there's a designated like town official to represent us at C C four C A. I think whoever that person is, is the one who has to sign it.
Yeah, so they, they're specifically asking for elected officials, so like I wouldn't be able to sign it. Yeah, no, it would need that, so it, so it's being brought to the B O T tomorrow, just so you know, it's, so that's another.
We stuck it on the agenda at the last second just because we want to make sure we can do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I just wanted to make y'all aware of that, um, since.
Rather hear about it now than tomorrow. Been an exciting surprise.
Okay, um. I don't know how long we want this meeting to go for, but if we want to end at six, um, is there? Anything we need to still talk about, anything, any points, any?
Know what happens tomorrow and then we can see where we want to go from there, what the board says.
Yeah, I guess I, I would love to have an overview of like where the B O T is in this process. And what their plans are for the next two, three weeks or whatever.
Yeah, it seems like if this is, like if comment is due by the second of April, the. Well, eighteen isn't too late, but we probably want to start talking to folks. About writing letters before the draft letter is ready on the eighteenth.
Yeah. I'd be open to holding another session like this. Where we dig into more things and, and go through some more of the documents.
Yeah.
Pull out some citations for things.
And do we want to draft a letter that the public then can use? And would we want to do that at a session like this?
I think that's super, uh, maybe session like this, combination of this or asynchronous. But like something, I'm thinking something with sections where it could be like this, I care about, that I care about. With like, the work of, these are the parts from the document that is. You know, big and jargon-y that like, uh. I, as a citizen, uh, why am concerned about like putting something together like that sooner than later would be really helpful. And also talking about how we get that into the folks' hands.
Yeah, is that something that's going to just be a B O T shared document? Or is, can we splash in the, um, in the Mountaineer or on social media? Is there any requirements or suggestions?
This is a kind of a sensitive process. I think you want to avoid something that looks like. Let me find out. I'll answer that question. I want to make sure that we stay on the right side here.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I guess, John, I just wanted to. Can I do this as an official Sav wearing my hat? Or do I need to be doing this as Melody Baumhofer, resident of Netherland? Because I'm happy to write a letter to the Mountaineer as Melody Baumhofer. Netherland resident, not at all connected to, this is what they should comment. I, I just want to make sure we're careful about how we do it.
Yeah, I will answer that question for you first thing in the morning. I just need to talk to Jennifer about it, but I will, I understand what you're asking there.
Um, I think the other question I had before we end this meeting is. Um, the draft letter that you shared with us, John, doesn't directly say that we're objecting to the permit. And I just wanted to confirm that we are filing an objection. As a town of Netherland to this permit application, or are we only filing a comment?
We're filing an object, I, well, I guess need to talk to the board still, but that's my intent or my understanding is it's an objection.
Okay, because it doesn't directly say that anywhere in the letter, so it should say we object to this permit.
Agreed.
Okay, cool. I don't have any other questions for tonight and we'll try to find another time.
Yeah, just because scheduling can be difficult. Could we do that now? Since everyone's here, it makes my life so much easier. Perfect. Yeah, cuz it's gonna be like chasing herding cats if I wanna get a time set later.
Let, um, Doodle fix that for me for a while and then I got used to having access to everyone's calendars and.
So I can't do next Wednesday, but I could do. A, a week from now or next Tuesday.
So.
And I can't do the Wednesday after that.
Monday, the tenth, Tuesday, the eleventh, any?
Good, e- either of those days. Um, I'll be, I'll be in Florida, um, um, I can, I can zoom in.
Okay. Um, would a certain time work better for you being a different time zone?
If you do it four again, can you be there? Assuming you're not like in that little part that's in the central time. There's a part of Florida that's in the central time zone. There's part of Oregon that's in the mountain zone. So you can actually be in Oregon and Florida and only be an hour apart if you're in these two little zones, yeah. Earlier actually would be better for me, probably.
Earlier as in before, for our time?
For, for our time would be better.
How does that work for?
Uh, you can give me any.
Monday, fine.
Anytime Monday. John, Monday, uh, the tenth, what time in the afternoon works for you?
Sorry, you can't see me looking. The tenth, I am free from eleven until six.
Okay. And then Rab, do you have conflicts or do you want to be included?
I have specifically no conflict.
Okay. And Britt, um, if you want to be on that call, which you don't have to be.
Does two P M work?
Yeah, I can, I can. Okay. Two P M then, we will say, two P M on March tenth and I will get that posted. Um, next or before. Next week.
Yeah.
Oh, we, so we have a member of the public who's gonna, um, join Denise Osman.
Does she have any comments?
Um, she's in the lobby, so I'm just gonna admit her.
Great. Oh, oh, in the lobby, not in the lobby.
No, sorry, yeah. Oh, then she just left.
Okay.
She really missed it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's cool.
I believe she submitted a, um. To the BOT, she submitted. A comment.
I know there's lots of citizens who are looking to submit comments. I think I just wanna make sure that they.
Are armed.
Yes, can, can submit comments that are actually gonna be impactful. And not just say, no, I don't wanna mine expansion, that's stupid and, you know.
Yeah, we don't want.
We don't want people submitting comments like that. We want people submitting comments that are actually. Going to address the concerns that the department is considering.
Do we want it to be like fill in the blank or do we, cuz we don't necessarily want them all to look the same, right? Cuz then it's just copy and pasting.
You know, it, it doesn't really harm a lot, even when a group gets together. And, and does submit those same comments over and over.
Okay.
Um, but we could, we would absolutely say in our stuff that we're giving out, we're not. Requiring you to copy and paste this. Feel free to add. Uh, any of your own personal comments as well, but here are the major points that we're addressing and here are the major concerns we have.
I think, you know, for example, I probably would not submit the whole list personally and I'd be like. Man, this water quality, like, your record on water quality and your plan is like not sufficient and like. You know, and.
Okay, Denise is entering again.
Um, do we have anything else?
Time is up, but we have a member from the public that wants to make a comment or anything. I think we should.
Denise, um, we are wrapping up our meeting, but if you want to, uh, make any sort of comment or ask a question, you're welcome to. She might not be able to hear me. Yeah.
Or she might not feel loud and mute.
Or, yeah, there could be all sorts of issues with audio. Okay, um, anything else from you, John?
No, I appreciate your time and Melody, I heard you about process and I know we need to talk about that and I don't want you to get the impression I'm ignoring. This one came quick and I know it's a larger issue to discuss, so. I have it on my list and tracking document, so I will make sure I continue to do that and we can hopefully bring some resolution around that soon.
Yeah, it's just, this has been on the SAB agenda since December and so. I, I thought that we would be included in this kind of draft letter comment period a little sooner. Than we were and I, and I, and I'm not blaming anyone or like thinking anybody's trying to do anything nefarious. It's just now the third kind of sustainability related topic where. That has happened and so I wanna get clear on the process moving forward so that. The BOT has information from the SAB before they start making decisions on these kinds of things.
Yeah, I think we can figure out a way to do that. I think there's some things to work through there, but I think we definitely need to do it. So I'm committing to make that happen right now.
Great, anything from anyone else? Otherwise, we can end it. Thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you everyone so much.